Alright. Okay, we are going to start our meeting please. We'll start with the Pledge of Legions. Our flag's over in the corner there. Sorry, I can't sit just like that. You guys can sit up.
Please hold on.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
Oh, those old people.
We all need to stretch.
Alright, you need to start a thing? Okay, well, uh, we are, uh, mission statement in partnership with communities. The mission of the work in the Palm School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible, like one of them. Uh, board members present, um, all that Brittany Hill, she'll be coming late. She has conferences at her job in Moorehead, um, and we have most of our administration present as well as our representatives from JLG and Comstock. So, we have a motion to adopt the agenda. Are any changes to the agenda? And, uh, motion.
So what?
Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post-motion carries six zero. Okay, so we're just gonna go right into construction update and timeline here. Um, let's go ahead. Do we wanna do a motion or do we wanna do a discussion first?
I think we just do a discussion first and then we'll accept the discussion.
Okay, sounds good. Perfect.
So the other thing I was talking to Lindsay about is that maybe we'll go around. I know you can see our nameplates and that, but maybe just to refresh where everybody is. Or does everybody feel comfortable? If you do, you don't, I mean, we don't have to.
Nicole, do you know everybody?
I don't know.
Okay, so, so we're gonna go around because we have, we have a new board member here.
Sorry.
And Brittany might be similar herself.
Yeah, yeah, so go ahead Nicole, you can start since you're the newbie.
I'm Nicole.
Board member.
Uh, I'm a new board member, just started in January.
We.
Lane, the ISO principal.
John Jacobson, tech director.
Joe Keith, administrator.
Brooke Felton, district office.
Mary Ann Martin, special ed director.
Spacey Collison, community ed.
Travis Owens, Comstock, Idris Miller.
Lee Dover, JLG, art techs, president.
Dan Miller, JLG, art techs, principal.
Laura Adam, uh, school board member, this is my fifth year.
David Ellerson, school board member, same as Laura.
Amy Johnson, school board member, this is my fifth year.
Lindsay Lee, school board member, my fifth year as well.
And Matt, do you wanna?
Yeah, Matt Schaub with Comstock Construction, uh, president.
Oh, yeah, Paul Shannon, that's a great, Dennis.
Ronnie Tang, school board member.
First year this time or else, is that what I say?
Twenty-four year vet, but three this time.
I think to start, uh, I think to just start the meeting and the discussion, um, I just wanna first thank everybody for taking time out of your schedules. I know life is really busy for everybody and it's just, um, we value this as a reward for you guys to be here and give us an update. Um, we are accountable to the community and sometimes it's better to hear it from the horse's mouth, what's going on, than to hear it through the room's mouth. So, appreciate that. Um, we've had, uh, a lot of, Amy and I have been here the whole time through this process of hiring everybody here and, uh, all the different changes and we appreciate all of you and, and, uh, yeah, so let's get started here. So, I guess the main purpose is to hear what's going well, what's not going well, what do we need to help you guys as a, as a board? Um, and where do we need to go and do we have solutions for those things? So, um, starting now, do you, do you wanna lead off here?
Yeah, I, I guess, so, and what I shared with you guys, uh, recently, OAC and whatnot, is that we've had a lot of questions, uh, it's exactly what Lindsay said. Let's hear it from the horse's mouth, the people that are doing the job so we can hear it from you. I hear from OAC meetings, I have questions. We, I, uh, shared a couple of weeks ago in an OAC meeting some displeasure on some things and timelines, getting some answers, still waiting for some answers, whatever, and talked to those concerns with the board at the last board meeting. They said, okay, well, they started asking me questions. And I guess I felt it was time to say, why don't we have these guys come and why don't you ask them? Because they're getting hit up on why our kids are still eating lunch in their classrooms in the elementary. Great question. Well, we've had some things happen that we thought it was gonna be a month. It's now two and it looks like it might be three, potentially four. So that's frustrating. So, these guys get to hear it and, or they're living it as parents and they're going, okay, why isn't that happening? Well, we've had some things that have happened and this, that, and the thing. So, I think it's important for them to hear from you guys what's happened. I shared with them the RFI list so they know, um, here's kinda what it's been in Dilworth, here's what it's been in Glendon, here's how many it's been. Here they are. If you like them, you like them, great. If you don't like them, let's ask questions. Um, so just kinda all of that, the bleachers was a hot topic. Ronnie's brought it up a few times at board meetings. Then that guy brought up, and I'm like, oop, nope, and Lee kind of addressed that at the OAC meeting. I think that's good. They need to hear some of what that's about too. Uh, things like, why aren't we gonna be eating lunch here? Why aren't our offices gonna be open in December? Why aren't we gonna be in the gym on time? Just why, 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 why? Perfect. That's it. You guys, tell us why and then we can say, okay, community, here's what's happening. The other thing was, is, and here, and here's part of this problem, if you will, it's me. Because I came into the game after halftime, whatever, and then I see some things and going, well, that's not how I would've done it, right? And so, I kinda have to know my place, yet I have to ask the questions. I asked my admin team, hey, did you guys, what was the discussion on this? Cause I have, I have a lot of questions, okay? And it's, it's... I gotta be careful because you guys worked with a different person. And you got different responses. And so you acted on those responses. And then I come and go, hey, I wonder if we could tweak that a little bit, I wonder, well, that's kinda what we gotta work through moving forward too. Here's, here was the premise behind this for me with the board. I said, I don't wanna get rid of anybody, I just want us to get answers and then let's finish from. Let's knock this thing out so we can start impressing our community instead of disappointing. And it feels disappointing. And I think that was kinda the consensus. So that's like, well, let's bring the guys that are doing it every day and started the project and they hired and whatever, uh, when I wasn't here, so. So I guess the first thing is maybe we can talk about that timeline? Uh, why we're behind, where it started, you guys, I guess I'll let you guys decide who wants to handle that? Where we're at today and what are some of these timelines? Which I think, Matt, you shared this, this is gonna be good, but. So if you guys just wanna take us through the timeline and then I guess you guys, I have some specific questions, you guys probably do too. Let's answer them, let's get answers.
Yeah, let's go ahead, guys. If we've done in the past, should we start with one site? Do you think we should do that? Which, which site do you guys wanna talk about first? We're in Glendon, let's start with Glendon. Alright, so, what, what is the major, what's going on right now?
Uh, provided the updated schedule that we gave and talked about in our OAC meeting last Thursday, we update these schedules every two weeks depending on what school location we're at in our OAC meeting. The schedule's dated ten fourteen. So, um, just, let's focus more so on the commons, um, kitchen and the office addition. And, um, I think that everybody can see down here that there's obviously some, some gaps and tasks that are happening on schedule. Um, those are essentially related to some issues that we've come across throughout the construction process with, um, site conditions, uh, unforeseen conditions, existing coordination, unexisting condition of the buildings. A lot of that was related to the steel that, uh, was observed throughout the, um, site layout, uh, when we had our surveyor come and start laying out footings foundations for the office addition. We had those, uh, observed those, those, those issues. We brought that to the design team, worked through that, um, with the design team and actually with our steel supplier ahead of having any, uh, chain orders approved, et cetera. However, I think I was talking with Shannon, um, that, that evening on what some of the potential costs were on steel itself. And within that timeframe and getting an answer to our steel supplier, we were able, and we're extremely fortunate, especially with the time, um, what we're seeing right now with steel and joists and deck, we're extremely fortunate to get a very fast turnaround on that steel. Uh, I believe we got that at the end of, end of August and subsequently finished our foundations, soil corrections that were involved in that and, um, continuing our steel. Unfortunately, along with that, the kitchen was, um, essentially sacrificed because that was where we needed to start setting our steel and building our way out. That was just an unfortunate, um, event of what happened related to the kitchen. Um, our block there is, uh, since built their walls, they've completed the, the block. Uh, framers were in there and got the walls framed up and, and electricals are in there and now we're up in them.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we're just, we're waiting to, uh, get materials now for the, for one of the walls that are, are holding us up to, uh, waterproof that existing boiler room area. We had a wall that, uh, wasn't supposed to be in there that we need to provide carpet. So, uh, material is supposed to be here for that tomorrow so that we can tie that roof all in because obviously if we don't have a roof, we can't open the, the surveying area. So, that's, that's the direction we're going.
Matt, regarding to the drawings, I know there's been some issues with, uh, some of the measurements. And maybe this is for folks, but can you explain the process? And did we give you guys the drawings that were inaccurate or, so did we just mismeasure or?
David, if you, if you referred to the dimensional issues between the, you know, the existing footprint, essentially the building, um, yeah, so the, the drawings that we developed were based off of original drawings that you provided to us. Lindsay, I mean, those are original drawings from when the first building was built. We had, we, to your, to your credit, you have a great set of original drawings. They're organized well. There's a lot of additions and remodels to this facility, as you know. So back when we started this process, this is going back to even pre-referendum time, we took all of those drawings and we scanned them, saved those files, actually shared those electronic files back to you. And that's what we used to start building our Revit models. So Revit is the program we use to create the actual plans and our working drawings that go out, conventionally to go out for, for bid, uh, and then it's gonna be designed off of. Our normal process is if there are original drawings to go from, we build off of that. And then if there are discrepancies, say between, uh, the original piece and then some addition that was made and things don't jive, we, we go out, we do site verifications to make sure we can, you know, correlate that difference. However, we do not necessarily, as a normal process, if we have original drawings, go and verify every dimension, openings, heights, we, we, that, that would be a level beyond what we would normally do. So, uh, again, this isn't, you provide drawings, but I'm not saying that's your fault either. It's just, for whatever reason, those drawings were not the same as exactly what it got built. That's not necessarily uncommon. I mean, there are sometimes some differences in something, but for whatever reason, on the west side of the building here and on the north side of the building in Dilworth, the distance between, let's say, the projections of the building, right, where already Palms is, there's a, a south wall that's existing that we're working on them. And then there are projections where the boiler room is. Then you go further north and there's that space that used to be the receiving, kind of, uh, drop-off lane. And that's where we're infilling with the science labs. So there's a width there between existing walls. Those were different than what we, that understood them to be.
Those drawings, they, is that as-built drawings? I mean, that's, is it, they're typically bulked?
Uh, if, uh, if a contractor provides back to an owner drawings that are marked up showing actual dimensions or anything like that, those are called as-built.
Were these as-built or?
No, these, these were original bulk drawings, that's.
But to Lee's point, if we, as we are building that Revit model, if we see something that looks, oh, this isn't fitting right, that's what tips us off to come out here and look at this. In this particular situation, the space between that jump and that, this jump that we're staying, it, it looked, it looked like it, everything was, was as per the drawings and so that's what followed. Now, there's checks and balances along the way and one of them is, is, you know, as things are going up in the field, standard practices, it's, it's kinda like that same rule of nation twice cut once.
Yep.
You know, is, there's a field, there's a field verification process, um, that's part of the shop drawing process too. But at the time, the building in between wasn't demoed out, so it was out of sequence. So, that field verification, if I'm correct, Matt, happened after when the timeline was when the steel needed to get on order. And so there's a lot of, so that was the safety net that didn't get checked.
And then the, the north side of Dilworth is similar. There's a, there's that, that alley, if you will, the gap between the existing gym and that northeast classroom wing. And there's a distance between those existing walls and there's a length and that belongs to a path from what we had and the drawings that we had to work on.
Do, I'm just thinking, going forward, do we have any thoughts about other areas that could encounter problems that we should be thinking about?
The, the, the difficult part about those, that's where we're doing additions, right? The construction fitting into a footprint. And we shouldn't have any, all of that now is basically flushed out of the plans. There isn't any other places where addition would happen. Uh, now there are other spots that we're gonna be doing remodeling inside the existing area, but that's probably less critical because we're not talking about burning that steel. You know, connecting the dots between two existing walls and everything. Uh, unless I'm missing something, Matt, perhaps, have you got any other spots that would strike? Get it fresh or the shell.
Set for me in those, sounds, those, um,
Jurassic parts have been verified because it was, when we get in the situations like that on our side, the architect, structural requests the verifications. Normally, on the projects I've been involved in, there's a survey done before the plans are drawn. Especially on a, on a building like this where you have existing points that you have to meet up with. There's a survey that's done so that your plans are what we're building on. Not the dimensions that are essentially not even close. I mean, that's just my take on it.
So, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding correctly. There was no physical measurement done, just based off of drawings? Old drawings on a very expensive project, but that's common practice for you guys?
It's not common that we would go, we have original drawings. It's not common that we would go and verify every single dimension on it.
What about the survey you would be talking about? That's what I'm envisioning is that if, if you know that these are original drawings and you reference the, what's that called, David? As-built?
An as-built.
As-built. So if we know it's not an as-built and we know that it's an original drawing and there's common, per your explanation, and it's common to have discrepancies. And we're, we're talking, you know, a lot of money into this project, a very expensive project, but there was never any verification?
Although, just to clarify, those common differences are not usually very big. Differences in the convention?
Well, uh, either way, when we're talking steel and, and trying to connect building pieces, I am not an architect nor am I a construction person. Um, my field of knowledge is very different from that. So, when I'm trying to understand this, that, um, you said that the field checks, field checks didn't happen because they were out of sequence? Why did they get out of sequence and whose, ultimately, whose shoulders does that fall on? Cause that would, you know, there's supposed to be checks and balances along the way and they're expecting that your drawings are appropriate, so that's how they build it. Does it fall back on you for the, the failure to request the, the field checks or the checks and balances? Because I don't understand how that was never addressed prior to the steel getting ordered and then having this large gap and then now we're months back on a project and we're looking at more money. More, yeah, substantially more money. Um, and it's just like, well, that's a pay of contingency. Well, we're not, we didn't put a contingency out there and hold some of that back just so that you guys could, you know, no offense, but like not totally do your job so that we could just pick up the, the air ones as taxpayers. Cause we have a lot of people yelling at us, like, what the heck? And I'm like, I'm new here, I just started in January, I have no idea. So, I feel responsible for that even though I have no answers for them to provide.
So, in the process from construction on, you know, so every, every piece of construction, even new construction, still requires that process of, before materials are ordered, you know, there's the shop run process. Typically, a lot of suppliers require a field verification. And it's, and it's just asked for on the documents. And the contractors, you know, whether it's the supplier or the, the fabricator who's repaying those shop runs, they'll look for that. Um, that's what, and this was discovered after the fact. Now, could that field verification have happened? There could've been a survey that went through the building, um, you know, at that time to do that. But the building wasn't opened up at that time, um, and it didn't happen. So, you know, that's where the, so.
Our shop drawings and Reddit's drawings or whatever, are those same things?
Here, let me, I understand the, our standard process that we go through so that when we go to order our material off the construction documents, we do a double check where the supplier puts together their plan so they draw out their own drawings and we review it, the architect reviews it, the structural engineer reviews it, et cetera, and then we go to production.
Yes.
Within those drawings, the designer, the, the steel supplier often has questions and clarifications that they need answered on the drawings. How does this beam connect to an existing structure, et cetera? We don't go through and field verify every single beam or every single component in your drawings. Only areas of concern that are raised on those shop drawings. So then we approve those through, as a team, with us, JLG, the design, uh, engineer record and go to production. We did that, um, prior to knocking the building down and prior to footings foundations and the, the, the foundation footprint survey being done, um, essentially because of the steel we've been trying to write on. We can't wait to have everything out of our way, put our footings foundations in, then verify all the steel and then get it ordered because we would still be sitting here with no steel. So there's a, a process and this is not a process any different than any project I've ever worked on. Once the footings foundations are done, we want steel essentially sitting here so we can get it ordered and not be sitting here with an inactive site.
From, from our perspective, when we get, we've got a structural framing plan that our structural engineers creates. They put that out and then we get shop drawings that come back essentially saying, here are all the pieces that go into that. It's our expectation with that would be a bit verification of those things when we're talking about. Maybe disconnect on the expectations in between us and, us and the contractors and.
So if that miscommunication lines up falling on us, right?
If, for them to have verified it, um, in the normal course of the process, um, what you're saying is you would've had to wait till the building was down or the opening was down to leave your phone very, very, very long, right?
And essentially if there was an area that was a question or a concern, have we got that impression?
I'm not trying to place blame on any one person, but this is a costly error. And a timely one. That, in my opinion, again, I have no background in this, shouldn't fall on the school district who's trusting people to make sure that it's getting done right.
We request that the shop drawings, the tip, standard processes, that the field verification happens accordingly. I understand why it didn't happen because of the sequencing and the field for a timeline issue. Um, contractually, that is, that is part of the process, but I do understand why, why it didn't get measured.
Well, I think it, I'm sorry. Well, I think the other issue that's happening, you know, measurements, whatever, is that we have, and I don't know the number of projects happening in this project that I have no numbers for, that we're doing. And the reason we're doing them is because we won't be in until twenty-six if we don't keep moving. But I don't know the number. So, when we come down and these guys start asking me, well, what's that cost? I don't know. You mean they're doing it? We don't know? Yeah, because we don't have an answer yet, but I have to say yes to it. Or I haven't said anything, the contractors are just doing it. Because otherwise we won't get the project done. This has been my frustration with the RFI process is, since it's not happening quickly, some of these guys are just doing something and if I said, wait, until JLG gives you the exact stuff, gets the fix, give me the number, and now let's go, we wouldn't, we wouldn't open in a couple of years, the way this feels to me. And then this is what's frustrating for me, cause I watched them, here's an example. The boiler room, room deal right over here, that's been sitting there for, I don't, is it a month and a half? I don't know, something like that. And now they're moving on it and I still don't have a number. So what if I say, no, don't do that? I got board members barking at me saying, when are we getting these elementary kids in the lecture? Well, I'd like to wait to know the number of something that wasn't figured out, whoever's fault. But I'm gonna wait for that because I don't know the number. It could be a hundred and fifty thousand dollar change here. But I don't know that, but I'm saying, so are we gonna just do it? Yeah, why? Because we'd like to have our kids eating by December in this. So this is this part, it's kinda like going into this library tonight. I wanted to still go sit in there because that's our reality. Is that JLG's fault? Is that Comstock's fault? I don't know. It's climate control trying to figure out our building and trying to figure, but this is crap, excuse me. This is the stuff that we deal with every single day. And guess who asked me? Every person that's went in that room today wants to know what the heck is Hunsdude doing with the contractors. Cause it wasn't like this before, so guess whose fault it is? I'm just saying, this is what we manage every day and it's the same with over in Dilworth in that little corridor, we have a window and then we don't, we got them, that was supposed to be done before school started. I have second graders staring at the window because there's somebody out there. So now we're trying to put blinds up so the second graders don't wanna watch construction instead of reading their books, doing their math. It's just a complete disruption of education. I wanna educate kids and it's just not working the way we can because it's three hundred degrees, it's climate control is working on it, we've got beep, beep, beep outside the window, we have, it's just, I know it's construction, but it's taking forever. That's how it feels. This is how the staff talks to me constantly. It's like, is this over yet? Are we done yet? Well, and then when I look at the RFIs and we're over three hundred and some RFIs, I don't know what's normal. I don't. I'm not gonna sit here and say, that doesn't feel normal. I went through a fifteen million dollar project and builder built fourteen classrooms, a gymnasium and all that. There wasn't that many. And, and I'm not, they got lucky, they, whatever. This just seems unusually extensive for me. And so, I don't know, and I'm sorry, I don't know.
Oh, no, 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 it's just picking, piggybacking out of Shannon here. The art, the number of RFIs, I'm not scared, I'm not in construction, but it is what it is at the moment, but, um, also brought to our attention how long it's been taking to get back to Comstock on the RFIs. It seems some are very, very lengthy. And that timeframe where some things are not happening and they, they and their subcontractors are not getting answers is costing us money. So, how, how do we respond to that? Like what, what is the reason for that? Lengthy delay and?
Well, I guess all I can say is that that varies depending on what the RFIs and the question. Like go back to your, the dimension discrepancy. You know, we, we did react to that right away when there was a concern about what are these dimensions they're on. Um, we responded to most of that pretty quickly. But there were other areas where it took more work to figure out what the details are gonna be to try to also minimize the amount of cost and time. For example, in Glendon, um, you had to understand what was coming and is there a way to modify what's coming versus scrapping it all and starting over? And we determined that there was a way to do that and you could cut off the end of the joists that were coming and modify them with field compared to having to get all new joists. And all, I guess, I'm just explaining that all of that takes some time to work through some of those complex issues. Um, I guess unless I went through each little one, it would be hard for you to say a blanket statement why this one is different. why this one is different from the other, which is some of them are complex to respond to, and it takes us time to coordinate with either a structural engineer or a mechanical engineer. There is back and forth dialogue we have, we might have questions back to contractors to understand an existing condition that we're trying to, know how to react to. So, I guess that's the best kind of way to summarize it, unless we want to go through and look at these bunch of ones and try to give a better detailed explanation.
I understand that part of the process is, the R F I is still left open until, even though it may be answered, it's still left open until-
Yeah, there's a P R issue.
There's a proposal request or something that generates the change, but the answer is out there, the paperwork follows. And, but on the, on the records, it's shown it's open, even though the answer is back and everybody knows the direction.
Do we have an unusual large number of R F Is right now, or?
Um, it depends.
I mean, don't know.
When you ask the question of what's, what's consistent for a project of this size or magnitude, I've seen other jobs that have this many R F Is, and that can be for two different reasons. Number one, the construction manager is asking the contractors under the document, everything, everything goes on, on an R F I, which we like to see it that way. It gets documented, we can have a paper trail, we know where it is. On other jobs, you can have a very messy job, and people are winging it in the field where they're just calling up on the phone, getting a quick answer, having a building off a phone conversation, and it never gets documented on paper. That's actually more worrisome. Do you usually see that many R F Is?
We all think that this is more problematic, it's two separate buildings, that each has their own conditions, their own set circumstances, and existing relations.
Do you think the R F I process is slowing things down, or, I mean, is it, that having an effect on schedule?
Slowing, I don't think it's slowing things down in terms of the ability to respond to issues. I guess, are you asking, David prepared to not issuing R F Is and just talking about it, or we had a-
I mean, do you think the R F I, the R F I process is slowing the, hitting us off schedule? Because there's so many R F Is, or there's so many adjustments we made?
Well, yeah, because there are questions and there's a clarity, there's, without that, makes things, it makes the machine slower.
I mean, I didn't know, just, I know you factor in some R F Is in ordinary construction, I'm just trying to get a sense of, is that contributing to the slowdown on, you know, because I know you have coordinate contractors, subcontractors. What, what is the cause for the R F Is? I guess if, is there, is there something that's behind it? Just the initial drawings were bad and then that kind of snowballed, or?
That can vary, and it could be because there are, for example, maybe there's something on our architectural drawing that doesn't coincide with what mechanical or structural or some of the consultants said. So that's a coordination issue, maybe we didn't coordinate it as well as we should have to provide clarity. Then there are issues that come up in the field that we wouldn't have foreseen or known unless we had ripped this building apart to see everything, which we did not do. And those are, you know, unforeseen conditions, things that come up that we have to solve or find a different way to do something than we get originally planned to do it. They're kind of the two major reasons for them. Since we've had a fair number of both of those.
Since we are behind and there seems to be a lot of R F Is and a lot of questions going, do you folks have enough personnel to try to speed this process up and get things running around quicker?
Uh, yes, I mean, we, on our team, we've got Mike Tid, who is kind of our day-to-day person that is, I guess I would call him kind of like a quarterback, if you will, if you use sports analogy. He is seeing things coming through Procore, which is the online system that Comstock uses to share questions and process things. So he sees it, and he will get somebody from our design team involved or one of the consultants involved so they can start understanding the problem. And as is often the case, we have to have coordination between architectural and the other consultants to come up with the solution. Sometimes there's site verification, we'll come back and we'll get something. But yes, I guess, long story short, we have enough people to do. We've got Mike, myself, Nick Petrow, who is the job captain here at Glendon, and Jacob Ricky, who is also on our design team. So, we have all those folks on our end that are looking at these things, and my job is also to help kind of divvy up who's supposed to work on something and come back with answers so we can respond to things. And that, again, usually includes us involving our engineers, the part of the team looking for the answers.
You've alluded to this, but, so when you get an R F I, a lot of times you need to talk to a structural engineer or electrical engineer, chemical designer, or something like that.
Right.
So, what, left hand, what you're doing is coordinating, yes.
Based on the conversation, what I would like to do is, I'll, I'll go back with Mike and me, and I want to look through some of the previous R F Is, and Matt, if we can just look through that, I'd like to see, I'd give some answers, right? What has been the response times?
We give you some more specific responses.
You know, when did the R F I come in in relation to when it was even back? You know, sometimes we have, sometimes they spot the conflict early on and they can ask the question, and, and we have plenty of time to respond. Other times, they come across something right away. So, when did it come in? How long did it take? How many different consultants did we go through to get it coordinated before it came back? I'd, I'd like to give some of that.
Yeah.
So I'll, let me give you any of that.
Do you, you don't perceive any problems with any of your engineering groups that you're working with, or?
Well, I'll just go through them. I mean, structurally, they've been very responsive, in my opinion. They've been out on site looking at things, I don't know if you guys feel, disagree or agree, I guess, but, you know, Sean, who's with Sandman Consulting, in my opinion, has been really great about coming out and stuff as quickly as possible. Mechanically, I felt the same, and I think there's times where I feel like mechanically maybe we're not being quite as much of a, true or false, I'd like to see, but I have also had conversations, it was my role as well, conversations with our design team members. They work for us and we all work for you, and I want to make sure that they're responding to things. I guess when I brought that up, they've stepped up and, you know, better responded.
So one big concern that's been brought to us is the gym and our seating problems in the gym.
Yes.
And before we had even went to the public, to the vote, and we talked about this going to be a competition gym at that time, I don't think the drawing had changed as the exterior. When we started, it was going to be 2,300 seating, then we expanded out to that 30-inch seating, it was going to be around 1,750, 1,800, and then hearing, while the top row was 30 inches. Can we, can we get some clarification on what happened?
I can kind of recap that. So, first off, the drawings that went out for bid did not have a correct depth. Like, it's plain and simple, we did not put it in correctly. So that was our mistake to not show the correct depth. We had 26-inch deep rows, and we knew we wanted 30, whatever. Reason that miscommunication happened and it didn't get shown away. But we did have that, that meeting, this will have been after it was bid, and we saw the issue, and we had met as a leadership team, the oversight committee, if you remember, and we studied what would it take to get the 30 within the footprint that we already had for the gym. And so, what was supposed to happen was we actually were getting rid of two rows on each of the longsides so that there would be two things, enough room to then increase the depth to 30 inch from the 26 we had. But we also knew on the team bench side, we wanted a little more room than what we had from the first bleacher to the edge of the porch for the backside. And then, to help offset some of the loss of that seating count, we increased the length of the bleachers on the end lines, the end rows. It didn't, it wasn't enough to make up for all of that, but that was that balancing act when that, we were supposed to end up with around 1,800. I went back and I looked, and what we did is we marked this up on the shop drawings. The intent is that that should have been sent out as an actual plan update to Comstock. Instead, it was marked on the shops to make them 30 inches without much more information. So, what the supplier came back with was, well, here's what it is, take all of those rows you had and make them 30 inches. It's two problems, it's going to be a more inflated cost than it should be, and secondly, it doesn't work because there's only so much distance between the, between the porch and the wall. And, and that's not their fault, that's, that's our fault. We should have provided a clear drawing, a more clear drawing showing how that all is supposed to work in the machine. So, I have to get with our team members to clarify that so that we can issue it the way it should have been issued originally, with a proper updated plan, that they and their supplier can work out, and could, well, confirm that exact count. Again, I don't have it confirmed yet, it was on 1,800.
Yeah, it was going to be in 17 and 18. So there is a solution, and we can, we can fix it, I mean, obviously, there's a cost.
I can't guarantee what the cost is, though. If you're called or had that discussion, you know, you thought it would be minimal, there might be some cost because we were getting rid of some rows. So if you think of the overall amount of material, there's less benches, right? Now, there's still, there's still the overall width, you're just making up more decking instead of, you got a little more decking instead of more seats or more benches, if that makes sense. So we were thinking there's some balancing there. The feedback we got from the suppliers that when you go to 30 inches, there's an entirely different substructure, superstructure to that that is more possible now. However, the number they sent is based off of this taking all the rows we had before. So we, we have to get that reconciled so that we actually know what the true added cost is.
To summarize, the solution is still the same solution that was arrived at right after bid, when this was clarified. The issue that we're still dealing with now is, we're telling that to the contractor, he didn't get quite enough information, he didn't understand, we're still getting them on the same page with what that solution is, any communications? What it's like, they got the factor that needs to get changed for 30.
Right.
But they didn't get the information that said, you know, we take out the two rows so it all fits properly and gets us to that 800 now anymore. So the communication is in the-
That, that shouldn't happen the way they do. However, I, I will also say though that, yes, if there's some cost to this, there's going to be some added cost, there, there's still a value that the district is getting. So in other words, we're not redoing something and tearing out something and you're seeing extra cost because of that. You're going to still end up paying for 30-inch bleachers. If we were to add the 30 inch in the first plan, you would have seen that cost.
I, I have, sorry.
But I, I, but on the flip side, yes, we've miscommunicated twice in that way, and I know that that's frustrating.
Do we have like a timeline to keep that gymnasium on schedule?
Yes, I know they need to get that order.
Okay.
I don't know if you have a set date, I don't think we've heard that yet, we probably beyond it. We're, we're going to work to get that done as soon as possible.
Yeah.
You can't guarantee it'll be yet this week, but it would be by early.
Okay. Like that whole new construction area, do you feel like all of you that are working on this site, I mean, we feel like we're making progress, guys?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're starting to move forward now. I mean, we've been sitting stagnant for quite a while, with some issues, but I mean, I feel good the way it's, the way it's going now.
Well, originally my drive here, yeah, yeah, originally my drive here, I feel like I'm seeing something happening, so I'm just wondering how we're all feeling about it.
From understanding, right, the south end, I think, is probably, is the less of the issue, it's the infill piece.
Okay.
You know, just a lot of challenges.
Yeah.
And that goes back to not just the dimensional stuff, there were soil correction issues there, there was a very taint, we had the dimensional thing.
Yeah.
We, the boiler room roof, we, we didn't have our roof levels shown correctly on the roof plan, and trying to address that, but then, when the wall's exposed, we're looking at the structure of that wall, it wasn't really the kind of thing we could add a hair根, so we have to create another wall, a new wall next to it. Kind of go on and on about that area, there's just been a lot of challenges.
I think we're all, you know, we just want solutions, we want a sort of project forward because, you know, Amy and I were talking about, you know, when we hired all of you guys, we were so proud because everybody was local and it was going to be, you know, helping our community and back ends. We still feel that way, we're all going to be proud when it's done. How do we get there? That's what we want to continue to do. So, do we have any other concerns with Glendon and Leslie Wall or two still worth?
I just have, I'm still stuck on this dimensional thing because it causes problems when we purchase other things that don't fit, right? Am I getting that right?
Well, the steel is the, is the main issue, is that can't be adjusted.
So, when it started out, had we not ordered the steel, what we did, we probably still wouldn't have.
Right.
You know, so, I mean, it had to be ordered.
Sure.
So we go off of what we are given for documents.
Right.
And usually where the verification comes in is from the last grid line that ties into the existing building. And that's where we verify. We don't go checking all the other dimensions on every, on every wall. That's supposed to be done ahead of time. So, when we ordered steel, there was verifications that came from J L G, from Sandman, from the steel suppliers, and they worked from the grid lines to the existing building, and that was all done. All done like it said, because usually on the drawings, from the last grid line to the existing building, where your verifications are required, it has a dimension and it has a V behind it. And that V means you need to verify that. Now, if there's not a V there, we don't go chase them after all them dimensions, it's just not, we'd never get anything down there. So, that, that's where we, we, we got them dimensions correct, and we ordered the steel. When was that? March? So we, but we have to, because our steel supplier's the one. Gentlemen, we gotta get this coming, otherwise, you're not gonna have it. So right now, I called my steel supplier, right now, if you were to order a job right now, it's a year out. Justin Decker, a year out.
Aside from the steel, there are other things affected though, right? Like the outlets in the new gym? Is that in, is that here?
Yeah, the precast.
Because our measurements weren't correct.
That doesn't have anything to do with the new ones.
Not, not with the bleacher measurement, though.
Well, not with the bleacher measurement, but the-
No, the precast, yeah, the, the outlets are in the wrong spot on the precast, so.
Yep, they got put in the incorrect spot.
Yeah.
We issued a proposal request to route the power to those differently, but that is not related to the, the dimensional disturbance.
Okay. Just a different error.
Yes, I can't necessarily say whose error that was, again, it's like-
What's the proposal that you're looking for as far as an alternative to that, those outlets?
Uh, we're gonna see if they can route the power on the north side above the roof of that single story area, and then drill a hole through the precast, essentially to get to a box, put their box location in. On the south wall, we're gonna have them actually cut a channel in the precast, not a channel, but a hole in the precast, they have to fish down through the cores, punch another hole with a new box in this. We're also having to price an option to use surface mounted raceway, which is, you know what that is, it's a delivery. We know that the ideal is to not have that, but we're in a process.
One final question on the bleachers, is two rows out enough to give Joe what he needs or what, so they can put chairs there in the other gap, or have you communicated with him at all on that?
Yeah, we, we went through that at the same time, we looked at what that commission was, I think it was 10 feet that we ended up from, on the player bench side from the port line to the first bleacher.
Can we get drawings on that?
Yes, we, we will.
When can we expect those?
As I said, we're gonna try to get that by early next week.
Any other questions on Glendon?
I guess part of me is kind of questioning how much the school district needs to incur on cost, like depth, for example, the electrical stuff, when that precast- When that precast was being put in, that electrical should have been built into that versus now us having to pay for that to be done. You know, it's not our fault that that's to be done properly. So I guess I kind of would like to hear if there's any kind of solution for coming around that.
Yeah, that is the case where there might be some rework cost because there's something not to get. I mean, it's probably what we're going to end up seeing. Is it some additional cost that you want to pad? It would have been shown that way right first time.
So who's responsibility is that?
Oh, but I was going to say that doesn't necessarily automatically mean that it's ours or the electrical mirrors. Responsibility to pay for it, even contractually. You know, that we're not perfect and it doesn't mean automatically that we pay for every single mistake. However, we also know that there is, you know, there's a balance there, right, in terms of how many mistakes are there? How far are we with the project? Is there contingency left? All those kinds of things come into play at that. So.
For the record, I don't think, just a second, I don't think we're, I don't think we're like nitpicking and saying we're going to make you pay for every single mistake. But some of these are pretty obvious, large ones where now also we're going to scoot electrical box. And it's going to look fairly pushed together, I guess you could say, you know, if we're going to be cost effective or whatever. There needs to be some give and take here because you guys have to take pride in your work too. I mean, like Amy and Lindsay had said, they wanted someone who was coming in from our local area. And we could say, look at this, this is with pride, we hired local and they did a bang up job. They did a terrific job. Instead of saying, well, you know, these things just happened. We're not perfect. So the taxpayers for DGF School District are going to be out hundreds of thousands of dollars. And now our students are going to be served in the same way that it was expected to be able to be served based on the project outlines to begin with. So I don't mean to cut you off there, but it sounded to me like you were going down a, well, this is just how it happens and you're stuck with it situation. And I'm not cool with that.
I'm sorry. I would say you're, both views are right. We do have contingency and contingency is to, the intent of contingency is to cover the intent of the original design. That's why it's built into the project cost. At the same time, you're right in that there should be, you know, you should expect a reasonable standard of care. You know, just like when you go to your doctor or, you know, it's a professional practice. Does your doctor get it right every time and are they diagnosing? Probably not. But you do expect a reasonable standard of care. And you would expect that of us too. And so when it gets into a situation where, number one, if we're running out of contingency and we're spending more, we're seeing the project spend more than what was planned to be spent on those unforeseen or those coordination issues. Well, then by all means, we should be talking. And number two, when it's, when it's issues like that, if there's a, if it's an issue of, you know, is there rework? And it's beyond what would be considered, you know, a normal contingency, we definitely want to talk about it for that very reason. Because we want to pride in our work and we want to end with everybody being happy with the final result. We plan for contingency because we know there's going to be these rocky moments and you just have to plan for, for the stuff you can't plan for or you can't always foresee or coordinate. But at the same time too, we do want to get it right to the best degree possible. I mean, we'd love to bat a thousand. But at the same time, we don't think you expect us to bet, you got it one hundred percent. You know what I'm saying? And so we definitely want to have dialogue.
I completely understand that, but I don't want it to just, I don't want all the fingers and all the dollar bill signs coming back at DGF and being like, just take it in shorts, because I don't think that's fair.
I think it's fair to say like, of course, there's going to be unforeseen which happen. And I think we're, in my head, I want to say we, but I'll say, I can consider like, that's fine paying for it, those unforeseen that caused delays. But when something's done wrong and then we have to do it again, then we're paying for the work that was done initially. And then we're also paying for the work that has to be done again. That's not okay. When it's not just one thing, it's multiple things.
I have a question as well and very, very much misled on this whole entire thing. Is the fact that there's no money for furniture in this project? Is that definite?
To be clear, furniture is not part of the construction cost. So that is, that's just not, it's not part of the construction contractor's cost. So the furniture is something that the owner will work with whoever they're going to work with to pick the furniture, to purchase it. And that was going to come out of the total project cost. I'm just saying it's not a construction cost.
Sure.
And it's not in our control.
When it was budgeted and planned for, within the referendum, so should they, within the district's budget, there should be furniture dollars there unless they got.
Is that in the contingency budget?
No, that is its own, that is its own owner's budget for work. It's the same thing with the technology budget.
That's part of the referendum money, money.
It's part of the total project cost, which is bonded money. It's just not part of the contractor's construction cost.
Oh, it's separate?
Right. So we will often refer to it as owner's cost or soft cost, which means it's not a part cost.
This is the part that Matt and I met maybe a month or so ago. We're going to meet again and I want to visit with you about what our contracts are and sit with our business manager as well. So what's sitting in the main, what's still left for Comstock, JLG subcontractors, what's, so what, because we have some things that are starting to pass some money. Does it fit in the contingencies? Well, yep, I think we're still okay. That's what I need to sit down again because I just don't want us to be at the end and say, oh, by the way, we're going to move your furniture out there because that money got used up because of that, 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 whatever. And that's the same with, and we talked about a lot with John, with technology. And I think we talked about that, Lee, I think you, Ryan and John, that there's five hundred thousand that's supposed to be set somewhere.
Just an earmark at the time because we didn't know what.
Right, yeah. So I guess that's the thing. I have to dig into the weeds a little bit, sit down with you and that too, where we had budget wise and that. Also find out what's left in the main. It was just something that threw me off and we, I think you and I, I was asking what, because I've never been a part of a project that wasn't part of it. And I went, oh.
Not part of the work that us or Comstock is controlling.
Yeah, and I guess from my past experience, it was always done with the architect and they have somebody already set up. It was like a bit, just like anything else. You had FFNE built in, there's three hundred thousand, here's your company that got that bit, go work with them, perfect. Done, don't have to think about where's the money. We already know it's there because it's right in there. That's what was different for me. We had nothing set. And again, I'm coming into the middle of this thing. So did Ryan have it sticking in a coffee can in the backyard? I don't know. I'm trying to figure out where this is. So this is part of a process for me too, is to learn, okay, where was that then? If it's not in this, fine, where is it? So, and I got a new business manager too that we're trying to work it out. So that's the thing I want to make with Matt again, just to make sure I'm not missing something. Because I don't want to come to the end of the road and say, yeah, sorry guys, new offices, but we don't have desks.
I could help you with that too, Shannon, in terms of some of that early budgeting data, how things were categorized. You can go back to the view and comment.
Yeah.
I've got some of that. You might get it too. I could dig some of that out.
Yeah, because that was, that's, so when I see contingency dollars going away fast, I also have projects in the middle of this project that are happening that I don't know and number on. It's just after a while, you're starting to go, okay, this doesn't feel very good. I'm just being honest. And that's what's scary on my end because I've got to answer, you've heard them, I got to answer to these people. I also have to answer the whole public, just like they do. They have to answer their neighbor. They have to look at this and say, that's what we got. Or hey, sweet, that's what we got. And that's what we wanted to be at the end. And so I guess that's why we're trying to do our job now, to ask a hundred questions, make sure we're moving forward. We want the RFIs quicker, just like the bleachers. We talked about two weeks, but which we're done a week ago. I know there's a lot of people to talk to and figure it out. I get it. But we just want this thing because I want us to get into the, to that gym before our season's over so we can get a game or two in before the flood. Because we're going to be in December, it's end of January, it might be hopefully end of January, but we don't know our bleacher thing. Those things, we understand they take time. That's why we want it done quicker. And I know there's a lot of people to deal with. But that's where it starts to, we start looking at it and say, we haven't even ordered them yet.
That's why I think the, I think the general tone of projects so far from where I'm sitting is that it's just, there's no sense of urgency. That they're just kind of a, like just a severe lag. And there's so many eyes on the project. And we're always asked, well, this gym has been sitting there for two weeks. Where are we at with this? What's happening with that? And then when Shannon spoke on all the RFIs and the lane with the permits, with the state, when we were told it was COVID related. And then it was, it's not that it didn't have anything to do with it. But I guess that's what's frustrating for me is that it's such a huge deal for our community. And, you know, we want our kids to have this fabulous building and all of this. And it just feels like, you know, we have constant prophecy, where are we at? And I don't have any knowledge on how it really, a lot of this stuff works. And so when we're asked, why is this happening? No idea. Just don't know what to say. It puts us in the house all the time.
Well, you need answers to be able to get the people that are asking you.
Absolutely. I mean, how do you feel the project is going from where you're at?
Oh, I've been frustrated as well because I feel like we are constantly running into something that we hadn't expected. So I feel like we're, you know, sports now, we're like always on the defensive, so to speak. So yes, that part has been frustrating. But I guess I want you to know that it doesn't mean we aren't feeling a sense of urgency. We are, we are literally have somebody on our team that's working on this every day to resolve this. And yes, it does take longer on some of these issues to get them resolved. But well, I guess it's this point here that there's that feeling that we aren't feeling urgent about it. So we're going to do what we can to change that.
Or maybe, man, I don't know, how do you feel about the contingency building up?
So I've got another document I can share that. It's our contingency balance. And we review that in our LAC meetings every week as well. There's a lot of items out there that we're still working through and working through the pricing. A lot of those items are still very fluid. The steel stuff, we're working through the architectural component of that now. Over in Delworth, we're working through some of the changes that we're making with the east wall of the gym. We're framing that up now rather than opening the holes in it, grouting it. So a lot of that's still very fluid and not a hundred percent valid in. But we do track every week what we've got remaining in contingency. We've got some that haven't been allocated. The dollars are known and we know, you know, what those penny, where are those? We still have some contingency.
Yeah, I mean, it's an impossible question. I'm just curious, you know, it's a moving target.
I was actually asking Matt that same number this afternoon. And the way I look at it is, you know, what is the percentage completed where we at in the project? And I want to know that question. And I want to know how much percentage have we burned through on our contingency? And right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but the project has progressed farther at a faster pace than what we've burned in contingency. We have more contingency left percentage wise than we have in the project. So that's a good sign.
Yeah, and would you say that most of our contingencies are related to stuff that's, I mean, the first end of the project, wherever we're tearing stuff down, finding tanks in the ground and that sort of thing?
Like the electrical over here, that big electrical mess.
We talked about that early on, if you remember, that, you know, it goes in a, kind of in a cycle or a flow. As you're getting into demolition, you're framing things up and you're trying to get the shell of things up. Those are the riskiest times if you will for contingency because there's just a lot of things you're digging into that has risk and you don't know about, right? This one's a little different because that flow happens and then it's going to move to another area where you start tearing into existing. You know, it's not a linear thing here because it's not all happening at the same level of construction. However, as we were saying, all of the addition pieces that are fitting in between things and all that structure of the steel going up, we're working through those issues as they come up. I do feel more confident that the next areas are just less, they're just less intrusive, if you will, for those remaining areas that have to be opened up. I guess my response back to that question too is that I do feel that we are on a track and that we should be, should be comfortable with this.
So for example, on these two sheets here, one's Delworth, one's Glendon. The top right, contingency construction design and owner contingency, those values there are the original amounts. And then down on the far right, that is with what's been spent out of contingency. The highlighted yellow is what's remaining. There are some that have not been approved for issuing the contractor's change orders. And that's essentially line items thirty-one through thirty-five. Those are deducted down in the bottom of that column, hundred seventy-two thousand nine thirty. The bottom right number shows the amount, if those are spent, what would remain contingency for Glendon.
Seven two forty-three?
Uh, one point two.
One point two three.
What's the forthcoming then, Matt?
So the forthcoming, those are all RFIs that are going to have an associated cost or a proposal request that we have not priced out. But it's out of pricing, some of them. We are kicked back and we revise just because, like I said, some of those are fluid. And we're still working out the details on what needs to happen there for the contractors to price them out. Because we don't want to sign it out, get a contractor change order and then think, oh, we didn't do it right, we need to reprice it out and go back again. So we want to make sure that those are a hundred percent valid in before we initiate them into the project and start building out.
So until that number is nailed down, Matt, which we use them as a budgeting number as a placeholder.
Uh, not for anything down in forthcoming. That's just, just identifying them. So we can talk about it after Thursday. We are, what the next steps are and where we at with them. And then ultimately get pricing on them and approve them into a change order.
Again, to be clear, the ones that have a PR line, those are, those have been issued as a potential request to be priced.
Correct.
Sure.
Some of them, like the conventional change, that was, we just received the architectural last week. So that one got revised.
So for, yeah, small print. For Glendon, so I was adding up to the top, there's one point seven million of contingency that was started with. And there's one point two three we need, correct?
Correct.
So that, that was actually the number that I was asking Matt about. That, that was a good feeling to me at this stage.
I think those of us that have been here since the beginning, we knew when we started talking about this project tearing into an old building, we knew that there was going to be those unknowns. You know, we talked about that a lot. I mean, how many meetings have we sat in? So, yeah, I'm very happy to see what we have in contingency and hopefully I can just keep moving forward. Because you never know when you tear into stuff. Ronnie's been here forever and I think he said every time they took into the building, other, you know, buildings at other times, same thing happened. It wasn't unexpected, like when we had to talk about electrical problems out here. Like, yeah, it was unfortunate, but you have to, you have to fix it. We know that. So.
But Lindsay, even though we talked about it, to, to experience it, it doesn't take the frustration.
Oh, a hundred percent.
And we get that.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
It's like open up another wall and play Mack Blackmore with another issue, right?
Yeah.
So this is good.
I remodeled the mold for almost three times we looked through it. I should have just tore it down. So, yeah.
This is good that we're having this meeting here and I think there's probably going to be some more follow up meetings. I'm getting a list here as we're speaking that I want to go back and dig into and Shannon will come back and share them with you. It's, it makes the frustration easier to handle, at least when you have answers of why. So.
Let's, before we bump, I know we've been on Glendon here, but let's, can we head over to Delworth and just talk about what's going on there? What are the, what are the successes? What are the problem areas?
I'll start. And as of, I believe, a week, year or so ago, we finally got all the steel on site. The modifications that we had to make, that one was a little more cumbersome with some of the existing conditions that we had to address, tying into the existing buildings, the gyms. But we've all, we got the steel on site. You guys have seen the crane sitting there by our flower garden. We're working our way out. That's the huge push right now is getting that steel up and getting that building to close. We all know what's happening. Recently, we've worked through some changes within that main corridor and some structural that we have incorporated into the project now. And I will have to go back and get that length gauge metal framing ordered. Uh, we got lucky, there was two hundred pieces available in town. Uh, we got our hands on that and secured that, so essentially we just need to know at this point.
Can I explain that a little bit? It was, I think that's another example here of some of the challenges, right? So the, the new commons that's going to fill in that space between the original gym and the northeast classroom. So that gym, we, we, in our structural engineer, expected from the way that was built, that we would be able to bear beams on that wall. On the south side, the classroom wing, we knew we couldn't. So we put a steel, there's new steel columns and there's new steel beam line there. That's what we went off of, from what we understood the construction with. Came to be, once it came time, and the gym wall, started cutting the holes through the face brick to get to the block, which is the back of the wall, that it was found that that does not have filled pores and reinforcing in there the way we had expected. So the structural engineer tried to solve that problem by providing a detail of how you'd have to go in and actually fill those pores and use one of them. You can imagine every one of those little connection points, that's a lot of labor and a lot of time. So it took some time to come up with that solution, figure out how to handle that issue. Found that that's actually going to be a challenge, cost-wise and schedule-wise. So then we went back to the drawing board and I specifically challenged our engineers, there's a different way we can do this. Can we come up with just a new wall or can we put a new beam line there like we did on the south side? Problem is to get steel, that's going to take a while. So what's the next best option? Can we put in a stud wall? And that's it, it worked out, it turned out well because they had some that were easy to get a hold of. And in the big picture, I don't know if you all know that answer, we get tossed, but that, that cost might be at least the same as what they're going to do before, but it'll be a faster time to get it done. So I'm using that as an example of, we are trying to react to things that come up, do the best we can to solve them. And if that doesn't work, we're trying to rethink that, so I, you know.
But in the meantime, I'm finally.
In the meantime, that RFI has been sitting there open because it's not fully resolved and PR hasn't been issued. So I guess we're, I'm using it as an example to try to convey that we are trying our best to come up with solutions that work and try to keep the costs and the schedule down. It doesn't minimize the frustration, I get that, but I want you to know that we are working to do that. We could have just said, well, that's the way it is, you got to fill the pores and drain up the weight. We didn't, we went back and said, is there a different way we can do this? I'm not saying it's to try to get a pat on the back, because that's not, I know that's not what you want to hear when you're talking about frustrations. I just want to use an example that we're not just ignoring things and they are complex issues.
Anything else I've got worth that to add? Know enough that I can dig it up other than the parking lot here. It's going to be moving forward on that parking lot, this is where it's, it's like the promise that it's going to be done, it's going to be ready this year, but I'm not confident myself in that, so we're, we're moving forward as much as we can.
The house, I think, the house now has been cleaned out on Friday, so it's ready to go. I think they were going to come and we'll get it today. Maybe to start tearing it down and get rid of it, everything is, the county's good, got everything out of it. So it should be ready to be torn up.
So unfortunately, all that steel and stuff that's sitting where the parking lot is going to be going in, was anticipated to be in the building and we've moved for the parking lot. Now we're looking to move it over to where that house is going to be done more and move some things around so we can at least move forward on it. Yeah.
I have a quick question, the, the wall that you said you had holes in and filled it. So in my mind, I see just a wall that's not as safe as a wall that would have all the floors.
Yeah, structural has analyzed that, I mean, they, they looked at that, what they knew wasn't filled and there isn't a, there isn't a danger in it. It just simply wasn't able to take more load in the way we were planning to add more structural load to it by these beam connections. It just couldn't happen the way we had thought it. Needed to original, or if it's going to. But it doesn't mean that that wall wasn't.
Okay, do you have any other questions or concerns for us since we have our team here?
I guess just do a little overview again about where we're at and how far we would get or what it is, some of these timelines are, the different things or would, would make to get into certain things?
Do you want to just highlight the dates or?
Yeah, for certain though here, so. So we've got broken out, um, start with Glendon first, the office addition. Comments in office, um, current timeline for that is February twenty-second.
What?
The gym addition.
It's a comments in kitchen or what?
That's a comments in the office addition, yep. So that's all of the addition in your middle component where you're receiving used to be.
Okay, that's what that line means, okay, got you there.
Gym addition in Glendon, uh, the January twenty-eighth. And on the first page, these are all summed up as milestones. Um, so you'll see there's one, two, five on the first page up on the top above the blue line.
What page is that gym on? Okay, there I found it. I'm looking at.
Maybe, and then you can just look at the date if you don't have much.
That's hopefully January twenty-eighth for the gym at this point in time.
Right, yep.
That's going to depend on bleachers too.
Right, yep. And for Gillworth, office addition, gym addition, we're including those all as one group. And we're in January twenty. Sorry, February fourth. Stage area, uh, performing arts is January twenty-eighth.
Now, that's a, that means that office performance area, that also like the kitchen?
Correct. Yeah, so. No, I mean, as soon as we can get that serving area turned over, we're going to do so. Um, that's going to need a roof on it, it's going to need painted, it's going to need kitchen equipment. But as soon as we get that, that, um, from the east side of the masonry wall on the west side, where your commons is the big store. From there east, we're going to turn that over as soon as we can. Hopefully, as soon as we can get what used to be your old, uh, dining room right outside of Wayne's office, get that barrier taken down and get that, at least we have more space.
Yeah, I think that was the area we were hoping to have within a month. Remember at the very beginning, we knew that was going to push it and that's the part we were talking at the board meeting. That tent wall can come down, we can move our elementary kids down there to rotate through and that's what isn't happening. It's taking two months and maybe three months and that's what's tough for. Our staff is talking about it a lot, our parents are talking to me a lot about it. Yep, I thought you said a month. Yep, I did, sorry. It's three, you know, and we hope it's three. So that's, that's what gets difficult after a while.
These schedules are ever changing, we change them every week, I update them every, every meeting and they, they change, they get modified. Um, our, our best guide to the dates that we can relay to you.
So is it the same document, Matt? Is it the same, is this?
Yeah, that we can do in our OAC meetings.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do, do you get it sent to, maybe if you.
You want me to forward it on?
Yeah, because then we can, if we want to look at it or if we have a question.
This is our weekly meeting.
Yeah, because we know you're busy and but if we have a document, we can look it up at, you know, home, how that you guys have showed us how to look at it, so.
It's really helpful, I have prepared those packages, I can send them to you.
You want to just send them as an email, I'll forward them at the end of the week. Yeah, I send a weekly update every week on what's happening with the whole school district. I'll just have it as an attachment. That way if they have a question, they can ask.
That'd be helpful for us, I think, to be able to, to see what, what progress is happening. So my question at the end here is what, what do we need to do as a board for you guys? Is there anything you need from us? I mean, we've had so many meetings over this last year, I've lost track, guys. How many meetings we've had, but I, if there's something not happening that you need from us, please communicate that. I know we've had a transition in leadership and I will take accountability if things weren't being answered for you guys beforehand. You know, please reach out, we're happy, I'm happy to, you know, poke the person that I need to. So, um, I think we're going to finish strong here and we're going to do great things, but if there's something you need from us, please communicate that.
You, I think just hearing, hearing the discussion today, we've, I want to figure out a better way for us to do a regular communication. It's probably been too long since we've talked as a group and provide those updates. It might be helpful for us to do that. And I, there's different forms I can do that, you know, if I put together a summary from our standpoint of what's happening, maybe I do that every other week or something, I send it to Shannon. Or if you want to just set it, more rate of time that we're coming into the board meeting, provide, I'd like, I'm going to do that.
Well, we appreciate that and we do appreciate everybody's time here. We, like I said, we've all sat through multiple meetings and.
Yeah, just for, to summarize for me, just so you know, I think this meeting was important to us. Just, I, I always talk with our admin about get the outfit out in the room so people can move forward. If we're always going to question and wonder and wonder, hey, is that GLG's fault, is that Comstock, is that Mission, is that, who is it? And I just, it's important to get this out in the front so it's adults talking about solving the problem. Instead of not, he's, I don't know, because I'm getting frustrated and I think they've shared that. So I'm frustrated with my board, they know I'm frustrated. Perfect, let's talk to these guys, let's get them in the room and make sure we know what's going on. There's nothing better than let's get everybody together, let's figure this out. And I really appreciate what Lindsay's saying, what do you need from us so we can finish strong? I said, that's what this is about. We started looking at contracts and started going, okay, what does this look like? What do we do moving forward? Because we are answering to a community or communities. It's, I take it very seriously, I want to do my job and do it well. Uh, but if I don't feel like it's right, I got to ask people. I'm not going to just sit here and not say something, I'm going to get my bosses in a room and we're going to talk. Perfect, now we know that we're all serious and we want to get this thing done and I really appreciate it. Also, what Lindsay said about you taking the time to hear this matters to us, this matters to me. I'm not walking away all ticked off, I'm walking where, I think we had a great conversation, we all know where people are at, so we can move forward. My dad taught me a long time ago, time is worth more than money. And right now, our educational system is not where it should be in my professional opinion. And why isn't it? Because we have a construction project that's interrupting my, my principals, their kids and their teachers. My job is to represent them and represent them the best that I can and that's why we're staying here. I want our kids to get a better education. Right now, they're not getting their best because of a lot of things moving. And we know that's construction, I get it, but I want it done faster. And I guess I'm just, I'm just speaking for me and I, and we're going to do the best we can. And I really do appreciate you guys, I do. I just, just like you guys want to do your best, so do I. And I got to represent, represent my contingency because if I'm not battling for them, uh, I'm not very good at this job. So I just want you to feel me a little bit where my passion is with education and this is interrupting my education. I'm just telling you, that's where I'm at, so I really do appreciate you, I really do.
And I will say this, I'm grateful to you as a board and Shannon to you for asking the questions. I mean, it's coming up, rather than wondering about it, you called the meeting. Because we want to make sure that you guys are getting your questions answered and you're asking good questions and actually it's, you know, making me want to go back and dig a little further and come back with more information for you, so I appreciate it.
That's probably it. Wonderful, all right, can I have a motion, um, to approve the updated, updated timeline? Motion by David, is there a second? Second, Nicole, was it Brittany or Nicole? Nicole. Sorry, I have to put Dan over here right now here. All right, any other discussion, team? All was in place, the eye?
Hi.
Close. Motion carried seven zero. All right, we have a budget personnel committee meeting Monday, October twenty-fifth, five p.m. This is a closed meeting under Minnesota statute for labor negotiations. Board meeting will follow on the twenty-fifth at six and then we will follow with negotiations, meeting, conclusion of the board meeting. So, um, it is eight twenty-four, meeting this year. My team down here, so.
And I need all these chairs and pads aboard, ready?